The following is a presentation of five interviews of the five primary candidates for the county board position of District Four. These interviews, back to back, the whole program takes approximately forty minutes. The candidates are presented in alphabetical order by name. The five candidates are Walt Buller, Howard Davis, Dan Griffith, Ron Norby, and finishing with Cory Norgart. The election for District Four County Board member is Tuesday, March 8th. That is the primary race. The final race will be in May. For District Four, for the county board. And so he is eager, right now, to share with you his reason for running and a little bit about his background and himself. So with that, I will turn the interview over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Appreciate this time you've spent here. Like Cynthia said, I'm Walt Buller. I'm a candidate for the District Four Commissioners position. A little bit about myself. I've been married for just about forty-four years to my wonderful wife Cindy. We've raised three children. We're enjoying seven grandchildren at this time of our life and it's exciting. A little bit about our hobbies have been... I've got candle making downstairs. I do sharpening. Right now, it's been mostly ice augers with their scissors, knives, sharpening that I have down there. My wife and I, together, in our forty-three years, have done seven houses. We've totally remodeled four and we built from the ground up one, three of them. So we do keep busy and we enjoy that. A little bit about my work history. I started in Cottonwood County in the Highway Department as an operator, heavy equipment operator. I was a member of the Afsmi Union at that time. I was a Union steward at that time. Then I had the opportunity to be promoted to Maintenance Superintendent and I was superintendent there for seven years. And then I had the opportunity to come to Koochichin County and be there Maintenance Superintendent here in the Highway Department and have enjoyed that very much, too. I've been here for twenty-one plus years since I retired in June. A little bit what I've learned from this is you have to have teamwork in order to get something done. I was able to work with the crew down there and we had a really good team effort. And also here at the County Highway Department, we had a wonderful team effort. And I think through working... Excuse me. Through... What I've learned also through that is by working together, you get things done. A perfect example of that would have been this last flood in 2014. How the community all came together and really got things done. We couldn't have done three-hundred-and-twenty thousand sandbags without the community being involved and the team being involved. And I think we can also... I've also done work with the MPCA, with DNR, Trails and Waterways, all the cities within the community, all the county departments over the time I've spent here. And I think it proves that I can work with people. I love working with people and I could be a good commissioner for you in District Four if you vote for me. March 8th, I would hope that you would vote for me as county commissioner. And don't forget to vote on May 3rd. I can't say "vote for me" because I'm not through March 8th yet. But don't forget to vote on May 3rd for the commissioner then. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate it.
KCTV viewers, I'm here with Howard and Gretchen Davis. And what KCTV is doing today is interviewing one Howard Davis who's running for County Commissioner, District Four. And the special election for the primary is March 8th. So remember to vote on March 8th. And at this point, we will proceed with the interview of Howard and we'll introduce his lovely wife Gretchen. And so Gretchen.
Thank you. I'm Gretchen.
And so Gretchen, you're entering the public life a little more now that Howard has decided to run and so, you know.
That'll be nice, exciting, yes.
So Howard, welcome to KCTV and thank you for participating in the interview process here and sharing a little bit of yourself and your life with the voters that will be making the decision on March 8th in the primary race. Welcome.
Okay, well, thank you, Cynthia. It's, you know, good to be with you here today. We have been involved in another organization, Circles of Support, some years back, which I think was a very good program, a mentoring program. And I believe we helped a lot of people through that. It's just too bad that that ended up getting disbanded and it really would be nice to get something like that started again, I believe. Anyway, a little bit of background on myself. You know, I was born in southern Minnesota at a very young age and grew up on a farm down there. After graduating from high school, went to vocational school. I guess technical schools is what they call them nowadays. And I became an electrician. And forty-seven years later, here I am, still sixty-six years old now. Moved up to the International Falls here. I was actually only forty-eight when we moved up here. So it's been a lot of years up here and it's been good. We've really enjoyed the area, love the area, you know, just want the best for it. It's not only a great place to vacation, it's a great place to live. And kind of like being in paradise. Although some of those days when it's thirty, forty below, we kind of wonder about it. You know, if you think about what goes on in the rest of the world, you know, earthquakes, tsunamis, and tornadoes, and all this and that, you know, maybe forty below for a couple of days in the wintertime isn't that bad after all. You know, so anyway, we have four children, two girls and two boys. Our oldest daughter lives down in the Twin Cities area and our other daughter and two sons live up here. Both of our sons are carpenters and have their own businesses. Now, we also have seventeen grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren, which we're really looking forward to seeing. Our last one was just a couple of months old now here. So that's going to be exciting. Anyway, I guess we've been married for forty-seven years. It's been good. I've enjoyed it. We do have one handicapped granddaughter that lives with here at home and we've been taking care of her for the last few years. So our life is always busy, never really a lack for anything to do. But they say busy people are the ones that get things done. So I guess I'm going to get something done if I end up getting elected here. As I saw the ad in the paper for the county commissioner and, you know, as I started thinking about signing up, interested in how the county is run, you know, how things operate. I know there's some things that can be improved upon and I would like to be a part of that process. You know, there's probably some other things that I'm going to find out that can't really be changed and, you know, I'm going to say, oh, that's why they're done that way. But other things, we can probably see that, you know, well, okay, there can be some, why are we doing it that way? Maybe there's a better way to do it, you know, let's, you know, talk about this or that. And you'll see what we can come up with there. I'm an advocate for small businesses, actually any businesses, you know, those existing. It'd be nice to get some new ones in here. It seems like, you know, people are always, you know, saying everybody, you know, we need to get more business in town, you know, create more jobs. And, you know, that's very true. But then it seems like when it comes down to it, we always seem to make it just about impossible for a new business to get started. And I think there could be some changes in that area.
Business, because you're a businessman and your children are business in the business world as well. I know that you also have an interest in families and children's well-being and that touches on county social services. So do you want to speak to the issues of families in our county?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of parents out there who don't really know how to be parents because their parents haven't taught them the right way to, you know, the good ways. I guess there may be more than one right way, but not good ways. And, you know, some of our children just seem to be neglected by their parents. And, you know, they're out there, they're looking for love. The trouble is they're not finding it at home. So they're looking for wherever they can get it. And, you know, a lot of try to turn to, you know, drugs and alcohol. And this is not good whenever you get involved with that. I don't believe, you know, exactly what is the answer. I don't know, but I think that's some things that, you know, can be worked on and, you know, we can find something. Of course, mentoring programs, like we mentioned earlier, like Circles of Support. I know that was a great help to many people who were involved in that. Actually, it wasn't only for the families involved, but those of us who came in there as mentors, it was good for us, too. And I know my wife and I got a lot out of it for ourselves. And Cynthia, I know you were involved in that, too, and I'm sure it was, you know, you got a lot out of it, too.
Absolutely.
And it was actually kind of a loss when it did close up. Just got so used to seeing these people every week and then all of a sudden, it was gone. We still do keep in touch with, you know, some of the people that were, you know, involved in it, those that we were probably a little bit closer to than the other ones. And, you know, it's been very good. So I think mentoring programs is one thing that we really need to work on getting back in.
The county has the drug program, which acts like a mentoring program, but that's only one mentoring program. So perhaps...
Oh, yeah, that, what do they call that?
Drug court.
Drug court, yeah. And I believe that's a very good program. I have a, you know, one of my good friends is involved in that. And, you know, we talk about some different stories and stuff and I know that's a very good program. You know, like you say, that's only one program and it can only touch so many people. Different programs work better for different people. And so, yeah, so there's very much a need to get something like that, you know, other things started.
Well, Howie, I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts about, you know, the families and the jobs in Koochichin County and we wish you the very best in the primary. And I want to remind the voters that, you know, get out and vote on March 8th. We have five candidates for Koochichin County District Four in a primary race. So again, Howie, thank you for doing this and... Good afternoon, KCTV viewers. Right now, I'm interviewing Dan Griffith and we're in his office. And we're interviewing Dan because he is one of the five primary candidates for the District Four Koochichin County Board of Commissioners. And so if you're a District Four voter, that would mean you're a West Ward resident or you live west of town a little ways, that you would be voting in the primary on March 8th. Dan wants you to vote on March 8th. It's an important race, there's five candidates. And right now, we're fortunate to have Dan join us today and tell us a little bit about himself and why he's running. And so with that, I'm going to go behind the camera and turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Cynthia. Thank you for calling me today, too, and giving me the opportunity to do this. I've lived in this community for, oh, gosh, I guess my wife and I have been back here almost twenty years now. I graduated from here, grew up here. Graduated in nineteen eighty, running to my old classmates every once in a while, running to my old dirty dozen friends. We even tried to play at the hockey games. We played at one of the hockey games, which was always a lot of fun. And really what it is, is I, you know, we've lived here long enough. I remember what it was like living here as a child and I liked it. I mean, it's one of the things that brings you back. You know, I lived away from our town for a long time, went to school, went to college, went to law school. I was in the service after that in California. It was beautiful there. We lived in Monterey, California. Our oldest son Marco was born in Monterey. But after I was finishing up with the service, I had an opportunity to come back here. And some people ask, well, why would you do that? You know, it was beautiful. It was, it was beautiful there. But we have something here that a lot of other places don't have. We have family. We have family setting. If you have, we have four boys now. Three of them have been born in this town. Our oldest is now twenty-one, Marco. He's in college. The next one is Peter. He's a senior in high school. Then we have Joey, he's tenth grader. And then our youngest is David and he's an eighth grader. All of them have been involved in different things. You know, we have a lot to offer in this community, especially for families and young families. And what I see as a problem in our county is that the young families are moving away. It used to be, I think when I was a kid, we had three full-time grade schools going. Thing was Falls Elementary, Haller School, which is the one that I went to, and AB, if I remember correctly. And now we have one and a lot of those students who used to be just in the grade school, some of those are even in the high school setting now. When I was here, I high school held, what, tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade and it was packed. That was all we could, I think that's all it could hold. Now we have, what, I think it's like fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, you know, all the way up. That's, I just... I see the town shrinking and I want to see it growing again. I came back here, I'm busy, I have a business here, I'm fortunate to be here, I have family here, as many of you do. And when we look at our community, we say, are we think we're going this way? Or do we think we're going this way? Or do we think we're going this way? And I think there's too many of us, we're going this way. You know, one of the questions that I was asked not that long ago is, what do you think is one of the bigger problems that we have? Well, you could point to this, you could say, you know, we need to do this more with social services, we need to do this. Yeah, there's lots of different things. But I almost think one of the problems we have is we need to have confidence in our community again, that we're not going here, we're going this way. We have a lot to offer, especially in this day and age where technology has such a big impact. We can do things and we can offer businesses, things that a lot of other communities can't. You can buy a home here and a pretty decent home for what you're lucky to get an outbuilding for in the Twin Cities. You can go to work here and you can go fishing in the afternoon if you want. You can go, we have hunting here, we have boating here, we have snowmobiling. We even have the theater. My wife is a theater person, some of you would know her, Debbie Griffith. And, you know, our youngest son David is in Borealis Bards and the Icebox Radio Theater, he's been in that. We have music programs, we have our sports program. We have a lot that we can offer to young families. But the one thing it seems like we don't have a lot of and we need more of are families supporting jobs. What can we do to get those back here? And I'm not going to say that I have some magic bullet, oh, one, two, three, and this is going to be the solution and we're going to have it done and just follow me and it's going to happen. But I do know this, I have my own business here. I know what it's like to have to work here. I know what it's like to have to be concerned about paying the bills and you need money coming in. And I think that's an experience that when you have that, you're like, okay, what can we do in this community to make this even a little bit easier? One of the things that I think would be good for us, and this is not the only suggestion, but there are many things. We used to really have a downtown or uptown or whatever you want to call it, our main street, and it was bustling. If you go up to the front of my office, you'll see some old pictures of the International Falls and cars all along the road and business after business after business and things were moving. When we used to have crazy days here, it was a community event. Not that it's not now, but I remember as a little kid, it was just exciting. You're running around and I think we can get that back. And part of what we need to get that back is we need a way to attract jobs that can support families, families who can have young children, they're comfortable being here, there's a lot that we can already bring them here with. We just got to get that, we got to get that part done. And if we can do that, then those people, what are they going to do? Well, they got to go to the dentist, so that helps the dentist industry. You know, if your child gets sick, we already have the medical facility set up. They got to, you know, if they need their, we have the service industries, eyes and all that, you know, all that kind of stuff, schools. If we have a greater population of those young supporting families, now instead of maybe half of an elementary school, we can get back to where maybe we need two full-time elementary schools again. Think of the jobs that that alone will bring to this community, just in the teachers, the support staff, all of that. We can do that again. We have a lot to offer, but the engine that drives the train is our economy and our economy needs, I think, a boost. So what can we do to make ourselves more attractive? One of the things I think that we can do is there are businesses out there where they need services performed. But say, for instance, if they were going to rent office space, that's a pretty high cost for them. Where more and more, like United Healthcare does this, I know, you can actually do that work inside your home. Maybe it's sales, maybe it's support, maybe it's managerial stuff. Maybe, you know, it could be a lot of different things. But a lot of those kinds of jobs could actually be pretty decent paying jobs. You save the company the overhead of having to pay a high office space and then you're going to have somebody here who can work right out of their home, make a decent living and have a reason to stay here and enjoy all the outdoors afterwards. I just think there's a lot we can do. I've lived in this community for a long time. I want to see it go forward. And, you know, I can either just talk about it or, you know, some of us, we kind of complain to ourselves a little bit sometimes about it or I can do something about it. Well, when this came up, yeah, I know it's a lot of work. That's okay, I'm not afraid of work. Work is okay and it helps all of us. And I'll tell you, it helps all the business people, too. It raises all the votes, raises it all better for all of us. And so that's my reason for wanting to do this. Many of you have known me. If you have any questions, you can certainly call and ask me or you can email me. I will try to get back to you as quickly as I can. And with that, I just thank you for the opportunity and I hope you consider voting for me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dan. That was very informative. I just want to remind voters, you gave a very thorough explanation of your reason for running. Appreciate that. I'd like to remind the voters, March 8th, right?
March 8th.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I am interviewing Ron Norby. He is one of the five candidates for Koochichin County District Four County Board of Commissioners. The primary race is taking place on March 8th and if you're in District Four, you should remember to vote in the primary race on March 8th. So Ron has graciously agreed to be interviewed by KCTV and he'll be telling you a little bit about himself and why he's interested in running. And thank you, Ron, for being here. We are in his home, actually.
Well, thank you, Cynthia.
Yeah.
So my name is Ron Norby. My wife, Pat, and I are both Boise retirees and we live a couple of miles out of town in the Meadowview area. Between the two of us, we have four grown sons and three grandchildren. The reason I'm running for county commissioner is it's something I've always been interested in and it seemed like now was my time to try it. So that's why I'm doing it and it's something I'm actually interested in. A little bit more about myself, as I was born and raised down in Clearwater County and graduated from Bagley High School and moved to International Falls in nineteen sixty-five and started working in the old Boise or the Mando Insulate Plant at that time. And about a year later, moved over to the, transferred to the paper machines and I've been there ever since. During the time I was in Boise, I was a Union member for twenty-one years and a salary supervisor for sixteen more years. So during that time, of course, I had twenty, had sixteen years of decision-making experience and experience with establishing and working within budgets and of course managing and supervising people and creating and implementing a lot of different policies. So I'm hoping some of those experiences will help me as a county commissioner. So as a county commissioner, I believe that the county board has a lot of tough issues ahead of them and a lot of issues are going to be tough to solve. And I look forward to giving my input and solving these problems. And some of the bigger issues certainly are the Island View sewer line extension. The folks out on the Van Lynn Road really need an overpass or a road out of there or some solution to their problem. And the rain year access issue. Certainly one of the, one of the big concerns, I believe, for District Four and all of Koochichin County is our aging population and we have less good-paying jobs to keep young families in this community. And if you're a young, educated person, it's tough to pursue a career path in a small town. But I believe, my personal opinion is that we're very fortunate to have the Park Service and the Border Patrol Station and the Customs and Border Protection people here. Then there's a lot of high-paid jobs there and those folks buy a lot of products and services and have their kids in our school systems and we're fortunate to have them here. I've also been asked several times what I feel, how I feel about economic development and the efforts that are being made. And I think that KITA is a terrific thing and they need to keep, they need to keep doing what they're doing and we need to support their efforts. And I think the Voyage Forward concept is another terrific idea and we all need to get behind it and support that idea. And as a county commissioner, I will certainly support any infrastructure improvements that are needed to encourage businesses and new homeowners to move to Koochichin County. Another question I have been asking, of course, is, is why are you running for county commissioner? Why would you want to do something like this? And I think people think that I have some issue with the county board or I'm disgusted or disappointed with some decisions they've made in the past or I have some personal goal or personal objective. I absolutely have no personal agenda. The only agenda I have is whatever is most concerning for the residents of District Four. And in the next few days, I'm going to be driving around talking to as many of the residents as I possibly can and I look forward to learning what their concerns are. And that's what I'll be representing at the county board table, not my own agenda.
Thank you, Ron. Is there anything you'd like to add to the thoughts you had today?
So thank you for your time today, Cynthia. And I look forward to everyone coming out to vote on March 8th in the primary. And it's, you know, it's like, it's like when you, people come out to vote, you're not just putting a check by your favorite person. Essentially, what you're doing is you're hiring that person to represent you at the county board. And I'm planning on doing a good job at that, so I hope you support me.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. And that's just for District Four Koochichin County voters. And there's five candidates and tonight, we'll be talking to Cory, Cory Norgart. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Cynthia.
Yes, Cory. We're in Cory's home and...
Yes.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about yourself, background.
Okay. My name's Cory Norgart. I was born and raised in Koochichin County. My family and I are sixty-two-year residents of Papermakers Colony. I'm a nineteen-year Union member of the Pipe Fitters, Steam Fitters Union. I am labor-friendly, I am pro-jobs to our community and I've raised the fourth generation in the same house I was born and grew up in. So my, me and my family have been around here a long time. And we are, we are home people, homegrown.
Deep roots.
Yep, deep roots.
And so you are, is this a first-time race for you?
Yes, yes, first time I've ever run for any political office.
Okay. And what inspired you to run?
Well, we've, through the years, like I said, I... Well, we've, through the years, like I said, I've been in this house here a long time. Through the years, I've, I've watched my grandfather, um, get involved in certain issues and stuff in the area. And I've just always been interested in what he's accomplished. I, I've been through a lot of union negotiations, stuff that's similar to the jobs that a county commissioner would do, um, you know, negotiating, working with others, um, listening to others, uh, helping others. And just all in all, working as one to figure out whatever situation we can the best way possible. Um, I'm forty-three years old now. Um, I have a little time under my belt. I may not have as much experience as a couple of our older candidates that are running, but I believe I can learn this job and be around here for a long time to serve our community.
Great. What's your main message that you want to convey?
Well, we live in an area that is governed by a city and a county. And we have a lot of separate entities and loan commissions in this county. And it seems whenever something good is about to come to our community, we get this big entanglement of people that are working norm, usually working together on the same boards and commissions. And I think we need to get away from that. We need to get a fresh perspective in here. We need some fresh minds. Listen, um, we have a lot of young people growing up in this community. A lot of smart individuals, educated individuals that are gonna be able to help us in the years to come. And I'm one of them. And I just hope they feel the same way I do, that we need, we need a change here. We need to get, we need to get some different people, some different blood on these boards and commissions. And we need to work together. There's just way too much one-sidedness on a lot of issues that I've watched on TV, meetings, meetings I've attended, um, word of mouth. Issues people have brought to my attention when I've been going door-to-door campaigning. We, we need to work together. We're a small community. We don't have anybody else. You know, we are not in the cities where you have so many other communities and so many people around you that, and they're just taken off financially. We don't have that. We need to learn to budget and manage our money. And, in a good way, in a different way. And, and that's what my perspective.
So Cory, is there anything else you'd like to convey to our voters, um, for their March eighth? For the Mar- March eighth primary election?
Yes. Um, when I am elected Koochin County Commissioner, District Four, my first step will be to pro- propose a safety audit on our city and county side streets and county roads. Um, I believe there's a lot of areas, I've been doing some self-investigating, a lot of areas that need proper signage, um, proper caution signage, right down to shoulder maintenance and shoulder reconstruction. Prime example is County Road one fifty-two. There are several areas in mind, but I'm using this as an example. County Road one fifty-two. There's no shoulder on the road, but yet the speed limit is forty miles an hour. I've walked with my kids on that road. We've been run off the road. I have proposed this issue to the county board before. Um, it was worked on momentarily and they made a quick fix out of it. And I wanna do a little more than that. Okay, another issue is spurring economic growth in our community. I've had lots of talk with the citizens as I've been around door-to-door about spurring economic growth. Um, for starters, I believe we need to, we need to back our local businesses first to spur economic advancements in our community. Um, if you're not supporting the local businesses, you're not gonna get any new businesses coming in here. I believe Koochin County and International Falls have ample room for growth, not only for our local businesses, but for new businesses too. I know there's been some opportunities that have been shot down in this area. I know Digiki wanted to come to this area years back and they were shot down. And now you see their commercials all over TV. They're thriving all over in Thief River Falls. And they have employment, they're employing hundreds of people in each community they go into. They weren't accepted here. You know, issues like that. We need to get more options in here for our citizens. You don't wanna call them monopolies, but when you have one department store to choose from. We have over six thousand people in the city limits. We have thirteen thousand people in the county, right in that area. We don't have much to choose from. Gratefully, we just, now we have another clinic to choose from. I think that was a great business move. I support that a hundred percent. And if I was in commission at the time that business was starting, I would have supported it a hundred percent. Um, I, I believe in options for citizens. And that's huge for our economic growth.
And so, uh, Cory, thank you very much. And I appreciate that you took the time to meet with KCCTV and allow the voters to get to know you a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for running.
Yes, thank you for your time.